Can I open the joint policy and personnel workshop? We're discussing rescinding Policy 5131, Stat 911, but also adding Policy 5131.911. This is not really any of the discussion policy. It's mandated that we make this change. And then of course, we're gonna have our first reading of our wildlife mandate and clear guidelines. For personnel, we're looking at the personnel contracts of our COFO and our team manager of contracts. Let's go to a policy first. We'll talk about, get further into rescinding 5131.911. And everyone knows this because it has come to us with review at least three times in the past year and a half, and now it is completely scrapped. There are some points to note that are staying the same. Like we think there's still a lot of the same definitions, but they don't want to use the term bullying anymore. It's challenging behavior. Still a lot of stuff needed to be reviewed. You have, let's see, law mandates the adoption of the new school climate policy. That's new names, school climate policy. Clear expectations for responding to challenging behavior. We have our definitions. We are required to have a district level school climate coordinator, but that can be the superintendent or anyone appointed by the superintendent. A school climate specialist in every school, which can be of course, the school principal or certified staff member designated by that principal. They must have the appropriate training each year. Each school must have school climate committee, which I believe that a lot of these things already exist, but these are pretty much the carryover. We know about the surveys, improvement plan, and of course, we will still have our policy outlining the use of restorative practices. We have already adopted this. It is now, I think it was somewhat repetitive being in the others. It's kind of now separate. So those are the main, I think, change-up points. Did anyone have any questions?
This red is gone.
The whole, the whole policy is being rescinded.
The whole policy is out.
Yes. Is it was just the easiest way to do it, just to rescind and then adopt new? But we...
So just to clear, clarify what you're saying, the red is not out.
No, that's all gone.
The red?
The red, that's the whole policy is gone.
And I think it's school climate policy is supposed to be the first reading. That's in red.
Oh, that is in red?
Yeah. Here. Look.
I don't know, I was looking at it online.
Bullying prevention and intervention, which is supposed to go is in black.
Oh, is it crossed?
No, it's in black.
No, I'm...
The new one is in red.
Right.
Oh my God.
You're right.
But it's usually a cross through with the old one, right?
It looks like they just flipped off the colors.
See, rescind, rescind June 5th, 2025. They did put that in red, so that's...
Yeah, so it's the same exact number, just got a new name.
I just wanna go by the name as opposed to the color.
It's going, we're getting rid of bullying. What is the old one full of?
Bullying, prevention, and intervention.
And intervention is out, and school climate policy is in.
Correct.
And again, it's, they brought that up first thing this morning in the legislative wrap-up, that this is not up for discussion, it is just a mandate by the state. So yeah, not much to stay there. However, they did say we could kind of waive the second reading and just adopt it right in the first meeting, 'cause it is very...
It's mandated.
It's mandated. As for our wildlife policy, we could take a look at that. Has everyone had a chance to review? This would be a new policy we are adopting? If everyone wants to take a moment to read through.
Is this, is this, is this, I was just a little confused. So is this like, if we have animals within the school, or is it talking about outside and walking through, a deer comes on the property? I didn't understand.
It would be within the school grounds. No one should be feeding wild animals, because you don't want to attract them in.
Okay. So there's been some instances the last few years of ducks habitually coming back to the courtyards of the school. Ducks get accustomed to coming to the same place to lay their eggs every year, simply because they know that there's food and water available. Unfortunately, when the babies hatch, they're not able to fly for quite a long time. So because they become entrapped in that courtyard, while it's adorable to see them, it's definitely not in their best interest, because by the time they leave and fly away, they haven't learned all the things that they need to learn from their mom about managing currents and finding safe nesting sites and evading predators and the right foods to eat. So that's what sort of sparked this, to kind of act in their best interest.
Okay. So, okay, so I understand. So like when the academy has their moving up, and then they all go into the courtyard, it's gonna be difficult because...
Well, it's not even about convenience for the humans, it's just really what's best for them. And the other problem that comes into play when we feed wildlife is that it often attracts rodents, which we really don't want on school grounds.
Okay. So this, this is just a policy for East Haven Public School?
Mm-hmm. Well, other schools have it as well.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, but it's not, it's not like the other one.
No, no, no.
All right, I got it.
So again, it is open if we wanted to add anything more or make it more specific. That is absolutely allowable.
Okay.
The only thing I want to make sure that we...
And this is very new. This is something new.
The only thing I want to make sure we protect is I know a lot of the classes do things with, like raising butterfly, things like that.
Well, that's in there. If it's under a instructional activity, it is, it's acceptable.
Okay, so the integrated where appropriate?
Yeah. Yeah, we had to make sure though, because we're like, even something they do with birdhouses and... Anybody want to make any revisions to the first policy? First reading? No? Then we will waive the second reading in our regular meeting to adopt if, so choose. Okay. All righty. I think that was all the policies for the committee. We will move on to personnel discussion and review, personnel contracts. Jen, I'm gonna hand over the contract to COFO to you.
Great. So you were all provided a red line version of the proposed contract for approval tonight, or for action tonight for the COFO. We are extending an additional year to 2028. The salary increase is reflective of a 3%, which has been standard across all our personal contracts this year. We are requesting to change the vacation time to 20 vacation days from currently at 17. And with the addition of a year, we are adding a premium cost share to stay flat at 21% for the 27, 28 fiscal year. And those are the only changes we are proposing on that contract.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions? All right. Then RJ, I will turn over the discussion of our HR Director's contract to you.
Yes. We are very similar. We are adding a year on the end of the contract, go to 2028. The new salary is requested over 3%. That takes care of Page 1, Page 2, increasing to 20 vacation days. And then Page 3, we are adding the extra year to the premium cost share for 3920%.
Okay.
That is all.
Did anyone have any questions?
No.
No? Pretty basic, right?
I'm gonna back this up a little bit too.
No, no, it's, it's, it's right. This is the old.
Where was?
Yeah, we're, we're good. This is the new one.
What's the new one?
This one.
How many, this August?
There's two new ones in the red.
Two, three. I'm looking at the pages, 'cause you said it was down to a couple pages.
Yeah, well, compared to the other one, it is.
Why is this in?
That's just a definition.
Okay.
But they're just not using it as a full.
Okay.
When they reference it in restorative and all sorts of stuff, it's gonna be challenging behavior. Any other questions? All right, I think we could wrap up our workshop early here.
Sounds good.
And we'll reconvene in 15.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order this evening's meeting and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call attendance, please. Anybody?
Yeah, I got it.
I'll leave it over here.
Uh, Ms. Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Uh, Ms. Delongo?
Here.
Mr. Hennessy?
Here.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Putney?
Here.
Ms. Santiago?
Here.
Mr. Stacy?
Here.
Ms. Terrell? And Dr. DeLuca?
Here. All right. For my report this evening, as I, we shared with you earlier, we went up to the legislative, um, wrap-up today. There are some things that we will be implementing this evening. There are also, um, a few minor, I think, uh, policy updates that we'll be doing over the summer based off of this. But I also would like to remind everybody of the upcoming graduations. We have East Haven Academy tomorrow morning at nine. We have the middle school here at the East Haven High School at four. And then our East Haven High School graduation at, is it five PM?
Six.
Six PM. I'll say five so everybody's here early. Um, six PM on Thursday evening. Okay. And then, have you have any public correspondence?
None.
None? Great. Um, let's see. Standing committee reports. Well, policy, we're gonna be doing some updates.
Personnel, we started, um, contract, uh, negotiations or, you know, dates to negotiate, um, with custodians and, um, teachers.
Fun times. Okay. Jack?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing on our plan. They're pretty much shut down. Seasons are over.
Okay. All right. Assistant superintendents' report on the BBTI trade union training program.
Yeah, just before we roll into there, I wanted to give an update on our elementary summer school program that we've been bringing back online. So, so far, we have a hundred and twenty-one, um, students connected with programming. So, we're really excited with the response from families. We've been able to welcome students in off of the waitlist, and, uh, teachers are working hard to develop the curriculum through a project-based learning approach, um, helping students to preview the, um, math standards for the coming grade level while supporting them to reinforce the literacy skills that they're still developing. So, excited with the hard work and what's going to come in the month of July.
And what grade levels are we offering summer school?
Uh, we were able to expand it all the way up into, um, K-five for the, the literacy, um, feature. We received an additional, um, competitive grant that allowed us to bring in a four or five group. And then, uh, the newcomer-specific support for students who are recently arrived, um, that is going all the way up into eighth grade.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay.
So, the next part of our report, we're gonna invite Mr. Dinozzo and Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Buck and some of their students to talk to us a little bit about, um, some partnerships we've been trying to expand in the trades and with the trade unions in particular. And Mr. Dinozzo's gonna give us a little bit of background and then turn it over to our team.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so I'm gonna turn the, uh, the program over to, to Mr. Jared Fernandez and Mr. Jeff Buck. They are two of our instructors in our, uh, career and technical education program. Uh, Mr. Fernandez, um, primarily teaches our, in our woodworking program and Mr. Buck in our manufacturing program. Um, we have been working hard over the last twelve or so months, um, to really start to develop, um, a strong internship program and a career exploration program here at the high school. Um, a short time ago, uh, early, early spring, um, both Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Buck approached me with an opportunity, um, that they're going to share with you tonight. And they brought three of their students who had the opportunity in, uh, in mid-May to, um, to spend a week, um, with the trade unions. It was an, an awesome experience for them, and I'm, I'm looking forward to them sharing with the board, um, what they were able to, uh, to acquire from a knowledge and skills perspective. Um, these three young men will be graduating, uh, and crossing our stage in, in a couple of nights. So, we wanted to, um, highlight what they did and the work that they've done, um, but also the work of both Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Buck. They've been, um, really instrumental in, in ensuring that our students have, uh, opportunities for real-world application of the skills that we are teaching every single day here at East Haven High School. So, I will turn it over to them, and I thank them and these three great young men for presenting to tonight to the board.
My name is Jared Fernandez, and I teach woodworking here at East Haven High School.
My name's, uh, Rocco DiAmato, and I'm a student here.
My name is Jodier Dominisi, and I'm a student at East Haven.
My name is Nicholas Johnson. I'm also a student at East Haven High School.
I'm Jeff Buck. I'm the manufacturing teacher here.
So, today, we're gonna talk about some of the work that we've been doing over the past year and a half with some of the local building trade unions in our area. So, the first thing that's worth talking about is why are we trying to talk and get some of our students into building trades? And, uh, if you've watched the news lately, um, there's a really high need all over the country for people to enter skilled careers where they're working with their hands and they're, uh, skilled employees. A big, uh, misconception is that the building trades are for people who can't make it in high school, right? Maybe they have really poor grades. They're not that smart. They're not gonna amount to a lot of things. And that couldn't be further from the truth. The building trades are great for careers for people who like working with their hands, who like to problem solve, who want something that's going to be in-demand, that's high-skill, that's high-paying, and something where you're doing something different every day, and you have a lot of room for growth. A lot of times when people think of certain, uh, trades, they might think there's not a lot of room for advancement. But within each trade, there's actually a lot of opportunities to progress into positions besides just doing the actual work. Another huge benefit for our students especially are, is the fact that the training you get paid for many times while you're actually pursuing the training, and you're not in a lot of college that I'm sure all, um, probably know people who might be in sixty, seventy, eighty. Some people are in over a hundred thousand dollars of college debt. These careers you can pursue with no debt for training. And that's what we're gonna talk about. The, the union, uh, building trades are a way to pursue that without any debt.
Okay. All right. Um, so like Jared was saying, that the, what the trade unions that they offer is, a lot of the training that they provide is free to the people that get accepted in that organization. Um, some of them even have a possibility of getting up to five hundred dollars just to suit themselves with the proper tools, footwear, uh, licenses that they may need for driving purposes. Whatever that person needs, they're very aware of it, and they try to help them out as much as they can. But, uh, what this shows is kind of just like a overall breakdown of some of the numbers that they gave us as far as where, you know, if you went the, the four-year college route, how much you would be in debt year by year as far as having to pay for that education or, and then on the other side is where that student could be making money while learning on the job. Uh, 'cause most of the trades, when they do their apprenticeship and their learning, is they're actually working during the day, and then a couple of nights a week, they go back, and that's where they get their quote-unquote "book training" of that specific trade. Um, and then basically just what the trade union is. It's an organization that brings people together to work on a trade. It about, uh, allows them to have benefits, um, which you'll hear from our students that they learned a lot about, where it hopefully opened their eyes that a lot of these benefits that these trades are offering as far as retirements, medical, dental, all of those things. They do very well for themselves in the trade, and they earn things like that. So, that, that's kind of what the, the trade union is.
So, some of the benefits of being in the unionized trades are, number one, free training. So, if you get accepted for an apprenticeship with one of the trade unions, those students don't pay any cost for the actual training. Depending upon the program, they might pay a cost for some of the materials, like a Chromebook and some of the textbooks. But you're looking at a cost of, the highest is usually eighteen hundred bucks, right, um, per year? Versus if you go to a privatized training facility, a very common example is Porter and Chester, that training program is about thirty-five or forty thousand dollars per year for their training. So, you, in a trade union, typically if it's a licensed trade especially, you're going to go for the training for four years. It's often at night, and during the day, you're working and earning a wage while you're actually studying at the same time. So, you're not incurring the debt, and you're actually getting paid during that time. The other big advantage is they have the highest success rate at the first attempt of state licensuring exams. So, the electrical union, for example, has a ninety-plus percent pass rate on the first attempt at their state licensing exams. All the private institutions that offer training have a pass rate on the first attempt of around thirty percent. So, you're seeing a huge difference in the quality of, in the amount of training that the unions often provide versus what you're gonna get in the private sector. And you also have to remember that you're paying, right? Thirty-five, forty thousand dollars for that private training. Their pay in general is, uh, really lucrative, and they have a lot of great benefits. One of the big advantages for the unionized trades is that you get a wage, and if your wage is forty dollars per hour, for example, your healthcare and your retirement are paid for on top of that. So, that forty percent after taxes, you're taking it home. Where most, uh, careers, like teachers, for example, right, you're making a wage, and we're paying for our own health insurance off of that, and you're paying into, uh, the teacher retirement for that. So, that, that's a huge advantage of, uh, you know, the trades would be some of those benefits that you incur. A big misconception is that if you're gonna do some of these hands-on jobs, you're gonna get a really low wage. It's for people who aren't skilled, you're not gonna make a lot of money. This is a sample of the ironworker salary, so you're seeing a wage that that individual would take home. And this is for, uh, licensed individuals. We'll talk about the apprenticeship program, uh, in a couple of minutes. But a licensed ironworker in that field would get a minimum of forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. On top of that wage, you could see the breakthrough that that employer has to pay in order to, per hour, to have that employee. So, if you break down all the costs that that employer is paying per hour, that employer is paying eighty-six dollars and ninety-four cents per hour to have that individual, uh, on a job site. So, one of the big misconceptions that, uh, we try to show our students is that you can make a, a very, very, uh, strong living if you pursue some of these skilled trades. The next couple of slides are just different examples of some of the other trades. Some of them aren't as broken down as that specific one, but if you are a sheet metal worker, you'd be looking at a wage of forty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents. The next slide will show the salary of, again, some of the ironworkers by, uh, their year of apprenticeship. So, when you, if you are pursuing a trade, most trades are licensed, which we'll talk about in a couple of minutes. But your pay is determined upon where you are in, in your apprenticeship. So, apprenticeships usually last four to five years, and your pay is dependent on your experience. So, as you accumulate work hours, your pay will go up. So, in an ironworker, uh, at, uh, union, when you have zero to seven-hundred-and-fifty hours, you'll see you're getting fifty percent of that pay. And as you accumulate more and more hours, your pay goes up steadily. While you're an apprentice, you are still getting, um, payments, you're getting the health insurance benefits, and they are paying into the, the pension funds and other retirement benefits that they offer. Uh, and you could see the chart on how that goes up. The highest pay is when they obviously become a journeyman. And a big thing to note is that this is a, a minimum. When you start, and if you become an ironworker, let's say, right, and you become a foreman, and you're gonna get additional pay for that. Maybe somebody after twenty-five years of, in the field, they don't wanna do ironworking anymore. There's also a bunch of positions in that union, for example, the training coordinators that many of our students have been talking to. So, at a certain point in time, if they find out they no longer want to work in the field, they don't wanna work in their hands anymore. They could become business agents. They could become training coordinators. There's a lot of positions besides doing the actual, uh, trade that they can transition to if they desire. Then we'll really quickly just talk about the process, right? So, we, we try to present the groundwork on why some of our kids might wanna pursue some of these trades. There's, uh, obviously some great financial benefits. Um, how do you actually get there and pursue this as a career? Most trades are licensed in the state of Connecticut, so number one, you have to accumulate the work hours, which we talked about, which is literally just going to work and, and having that document, documented. Then there's the classroom hours, and the number of classroom hours is gonna vary by trade. The exact setup varies by trade, but you typically need four years of, of training. You're gonna do that, um, the classroom hours in, and then you can apply for, uh, a license. And you're gonna have to take some type of test and pass some type of test. So, to talk about a little bit more, just to give you an idea of the process that some of our kids would be going in if they wanna pursue this as a career, well, I'm gonna talk specifically about the electrical union. Two years ago, the electrical union had two-hundred applications, and they only accepted twenty applicants. Ten percent failed to send in their transcripts. Fifteen percent failed a math aptitude test. The electrical union specifically uses a, a basic algebra one test as a qualifier. So, if you don't score a minimum passing score, you're, you're out of the running. Ten percent don't show up to their interviews. So, they end up interviewing about eighty people. They rank all eighty people, one through eighty. They offer the first twenty, uh, spots. They get drug tested. Six failed the drug test, so numbers, you know, up to twenty-six, the next six, right, ended up getting apprenticeships, uh, in the electrical union for that year. So, there is a, a really, it is a really competitive process. The different unions are more competitive than others. Uh, the percentage- than others. The percentage of people who get accepted, for example, at the Union of Operating Engineers is actually lower than the number, the percentage of people who get accepted into Yale, and that's something they share with us. So some of these unions are very, very, very competitive, and they have lots of individuals applying for them. But the breakdown that we showed you on the last slide, I think, is really important because there's a lot of things that we can talk to kids about that they can control, right? Follow-through, simple follow-through, ten percent of applicants didn't send in their transcripts, that's something that's definitely within your control. Studying for a math aptitude test, something, again, that's within our control, that we can try to help prepare and increases the chance of our kids getting this opportunity and making it to the interview. The interview is usually one of the most important things, that they look at, how the students perform in the interviews. They have some people that their interview lasts about sixty seconds, and they have some people who interview for twenty minutes, so a big thing that we're trying to teach our kids are how to present. That's why this is a great opportunity for them, standing in front of a group of people they don't know, right, and being uncomfortable. It's a great preparation for hopefully their future interviews for the apprenticeships. The Electrical Union has the interviews, like I mentioned, they have to take algebra one, which they're lucky, it's a graduation requirement here at East Haven High School, so all of our students have to complete that in order to graduate. And what they're really looking for, especially in the interviews, is commitment, right? They want to see that the kids are responsible, they're looking for leadership qualities, and they're looking for a strong interest in pursuing this as a career. What they're not looking for are people who have electrical experience. We've talked to the electrical training coordinator, and we've also talked to the retired plumbing training coordinator, and both of them have told us that they have rejected individuals who went to high schools, technical high schools, like Platte, because those students, in some cases, were less interested and seemed less motivated than kids who went to regular comprehensive high schools. So it's really worth noting that our students don't necessarily have a disadvantage compared to students who might go to an actual technical high school. They're really at an even playing field, even if they have no technical experience in that trade. So knowing that this is a great opportunity, and it could be really a life-changing experience for our kids to get one of these apprenticeships and have one of these careers, we tried to figure out what we could do to try to give our chances, a better chance at getting one of these opportunities. And I reached out to Steve DeLucia, actually, who was the father of one of my students, who works for the Electrical Union, and he connected me with an individual called Paul Castello, who's actually happens to be the president of the J A T D C C, and that's where a lot of this work took place. So the J A T D C C is basically a board of all the training coordinators in the state of Connecticut. They get together, they have monthly meetings to talk about various problems and topics in their industry, and it was a great chance for us to try to connect with people who could help us try to better connect our students, with our students, and tell them about the trades and give them different experiences. And we're going to talk about some of the experiences that we were able to implement with their help. So like I said, the J A T D C C is an organization that has a bunch of the union training coordinators on their board. You could see up here, there's all the, basically all the building trades, their training coordinators on that board. So it was an easy way to try to connect with a whole bunch of people at once. And the first thing that we were able to do as soon as last year, when we found out about this, which was really late in the year, we connected about in April, was to try to get some of these training coordinators into our classrooms and guest speak to our students. So we had the Union of Operating Engineers come in, we had the Laborers Union, which their business agent is actually an East Haven resident, and his daughter goes to East Haven High School. We had the plumbing, the retired training, plumbing training coordinator come in and talk to our kids. So we were able to, throughout the year, have some opportunities for kids to talk with these individuals and share their knowledge, which is really great. The one con to having a big event, right, is if you have a big event in September or October, which is great, in probably the day after that event, you're going to find out about a kid who wanted to attend that event, and you didn't know at the time, right, that they would have been a good fit, or the classes changed, we teach a lot of happier classes. So it was great to have these people come in sporadically, so as we were able to identify more students who would benefit from hearing about these different opportunities, we were able to give those guest speaking opportunities to them. Another huge event that we held this year, that we were working for, for most of last year, was having a huge trade seminar day in the library, and Rocco is going to talk more about that event.
During November, we had a trade seminar event in the library. Six trades, trade unions came into the library. We had fifteen minutes with each trade, and we were in small different groups during that time. And every fifteen minutes, we would switch and talk to different unions. And after the event was done, we would stay after one-on-one with the union that we liked the most or interested in was, and we would just ask questions of how the union was, what is their apprenticeship program like, and like, whatever you wanted to ask, whatever questions. And here's some pictures of what that looked like.
So back in March, we took a trip to the Electrical Union, also called Loco Ninety, where basically we went into a presentation where they taught us all about the Electrical Union and how it works, and they showed us basically the basics of electrical and what they do in their union. They also gave us a benefit package and like showed us the wages of everything and how everything looked, and we also got to see how a job site looks from start to finish. After that, we, they showed us how to bend pipes and measure, and then we learned how to splice wires. And then there's some pictures.
So a few months ago, we went to the UA Loco seven-seven-seven Pipe Fitters Training Facility at Meriden. We started by going into the welding facility. They taught us how to properly put on the, um, the gear, everything, how to properly solder and weld, the motion, all of it. Also, we went to the pipe fitting section, where they also taught us how to solder as well, how to bend pipes, and how to clean them, which is very, something you should really know for us young, young people that were starting, you know? And yeah, there's some pictures. There's some, that's the, the pipe fitting section right there, and that's also the pipe fitting section.
So throughout our work with the J A T D C C, we were able to figure out and discover this agency, BTTI, and its training director. BTTI stands for the Building Trade, Building Trade, I'm sorry, Building Trades Training Institute, and this is a program that really is aimed at trying to, go to the next slide, to get, to target different groups of people and prepare them to join the unionized trades. So they offer a pre-apprenticeship program, and their goal is to target specific groups of people, so they try to recruit people who were formerly in the military, people of color, different categories of minority groups. And when we first reached out to BTTI and we worked with them, we had them come and guest speak to our kids, they gave a general presentation about all the different trades that are, you know, associated with the J A T D C C, and some general tips for kids on how to be more successful. And we talked to them probably four months ago about trying to send kids to their actual training session and have them participate, and their first answer was actually no, they were not necessarily interested in having high schoolers in their training program. Once we participated in that field trip to the Plumbing Union, we talked to them again about the possibility of trying to send kids to their one-week training program, and they had changed their mind. Their director said yes, and we were able to register three, these three students to participate in that program. So it was a really big success for us to, number one, be able to have them enroll when they said no, and even discover that they exist. So our students are going to talk about what they did over that forty-hour pre-apprenticeship program. Something to really stands out here is that not only did they say no, and then they said yes to us, right, but it's the first time that they've ever had any high school in the state of Connecticut partner with them and allow that high school to send people to one of their programs. So we're hoping to continue to keep on doing it, but we're very, very thankful that they were able to allow us the opportunity to send kids to their program.
Alright, so I was very grateful to have the opportunity to attend BTTI training. So basically, it started off back in April where we got back from the Pipe Fitters Union, and Mr. Fernandez told us about BTTI and how we could attend in March or May. And so everything like came quick, and it was a little nerve-wracking at first, but when we attended it, everything was, everything went smooth, everything went well. We got there at seven forty-five, we waited for at least thirty minutes until they opened the doors, and then we started off from there, and for a few days, we basically just heard the instructor, like instructor speak about OSHA and all like the training and the importance of safety on a job site. And then for the next couple of days, they taught us how to operate lifts and do CPR training. So the first certificate that we were able to receive was an OSHA-ten card, we had to take a test for it. We basically just learned OSHA, and we took ten hours of it, and listened to the instructor, gave us a huge presentation on OSHA-ten, and after a couple of days, they gave us a presentation on CPR and first aid, and then they gave us a bunch of dummies, and we learned how to like physically do CPR, and then we took a test for that as well. And then on a few days after, we learned how to operate lifts, like scissor lifts and boom lifts. They gave us like an obstacle course, and we took a test on that, and they gave us certification for that as well. So overall, I thought it was a good experience, and we got to learn a lot. I would definitely recommend students next year to attend it as well. You get to learn a lot, and it's, it gives you a huge benefit when you're applying, it gives you a resume boost that a lot of people applying don't have, like these certifications. And yeah, I just, I hope that you guys continue to do this BTTI program.
So also, networking is really important here, because we're not working with, like as usual, here high schoolers, we're working with kids our age, eighteen, less, you know, there, we went there and we were working with people around forty, twenties, you know, they had, they had experience. They taught me stuff, you know, stuff they knew from, from before, experiences. And I think I really got pretty confident after talking to them, you know, because they really, they really taught me stuff, new stuff.
So after the BTTI program, we spoke to a few of the instructors, and they told us that after we graduate in a couple of days, we could call them and set a meeting in Hartford at their facility in Hartford, and they'll basically give us an aptitude test and try and help us apply to one of these unions, so I'm very fortunate for that. I'm currently trying to apply for the Plumbing and Pipe Fitters Union.
I'm going to apply for three unions, Sheet Metal Union, Drywall Finishing, and Plumbing.
I'll be applying for Carpentry, Plumbing, and Ironworking.
So I definitely want to take some time and recognize our three students, Rocco, Nick Johnston, and Jodier. They spend a lot of time to try to make this opportunity successful. It's a big ask to ask these kids to get up right early, make sure they're on time. They, not only did they have to participate in this program for that one week, but it happened late in May, so they had to give their hundred percent effort in this program right at the end of the fourth quarter of their senior year. So they would go do all this work, right, during the day, come home, go on Google Classroom, make sure they were going to pass all their classes the Friday. The last Friday in this program was actually prom, so they had to make sure they had all their arrangements set beforehand, they were not leaving this program early. So they made some big personal sacrifices to make sure that this program was successful, and I also want to recognize their time here today. They had forty-eight hours left as East Haven High School students. We had nothing to hold over their heads or, you know, entice them, right? They were exempt from all their finals already, so there was no way to try to bribe them to be here. They really came here because they had a great experience, and they wanted to share the success of this program with all of you. So we really thank them for taking the time to do this, and it's uncomfortable for them. And we also want to thank Mr. DiNozzo. When I talked to him about this program the day before spring break, which is not an ideal time to try to figure out how to make a program happen, right, not great timing, and you could imagine that as a principal of a high school, giving students, seniors, who we want to graduate on time, one week off, with, you know, five weeks left of school, was, he was not really excited about that. We really had to talk about it, right, and make sure the kids understood the huge risk that we were taking. We didn't want them to have a week off of high school and then this be the reason why they didn't graduate. So we really thank him for believing in us, for choosing candidates who we knew were going to respect the opportunity and graduate on time and do everything they had to do. It's a huge risk that he took, giving these kids the chance to have this week count as excused offenses, and we thank him for that and all the support and having, you know, finding the money for the buses for the previous field trips that we did, and giving us coverage and allowing to, us to attend all these meetings and connect with these individuals to make all these opportunities happen. If you have any questions that you want to ask any of us as instructors or any of the kids, you could feel free to ask now.
Sorry, I'm going to speak specifically about the E and P license, because those are the ones I'm most familiar with. So those licenses require roughly seven-hundred-and-twenty hours of classroom instruction. Do their, does their classwork at East Haven High School, would any of that count towards those seven-and-twenty hours, almost like our dual enrollment programs with college, like if they were able to acquire some of that?
So that's a great question. Right now, no. They, so BTTI is a great organization because, number one, it's free, so we didn't, there was no cost paid by the students or by East Haven Public Schools, right, to send these kids to that program.
Right.
BTTI does have a partnership with some other schools where they have an instructor that is paid through either by the state or it's negotiated to some project labor agreements that they're providing this instructor, where they have an instructor at a high school providing instruction for students while they're in high school, where they get high school credit, and then it can count for some incentive at a certain union, and it really varies by the school. So in New Haven, Hill House has a program where they have an instructor there, and when kids graduate from the program, they would come in as like second-year apprentices, so if they pursue that, they get paid more.
They can acquire some of their hours.
Right. Right now, certain unions, like the Electrical Union, has been talking about recognizing some hours at technical high schools for their program, but it hasn't happened yet.
So there's a path for that, we just aren't on that path yet.
Right, and I think the most, the path of least resistance is if, if Right, and I think the most, the path of least resistance is if you can become a benefactor of one of those BTI partnerships where they provide that instructor that's, again, at no cost to the district, and they are doing the training for that.
Because some of those classes are purely academic, they're trig, algebra.
Right. And geometry. They do vary really specifically by which specific union you're talking about, too. But the BTI, BTTI setup is really lucrative in my mind. If we could ever become a school that partners with them and is able to make that work, it would be really, really well. Some of the unions have talked about if Tweed does expand, if they were going to get some of those contracts, maybe there is a potential for us being able to work in an agreement like that, which would be really, really great from the academic side.
Right, and would it be possible to, again, this is a conversation for a bigger day, but would it be possible if a kid was doing, student was doing apprenticeship hours, which again, I'll speak specifically to the E and P licenses, roughly between ten, ten and twelve thousand hours? Would it be possible if those could be high school credit bearing as well?
Yeah, I think it'd be, I think it'd be great, and I think it would really, I think one of the great things about connecting with BTTI this year is if we got our foot in the door, right, like we're the first time they've ever allowed a high school to participate in their pre-apprenticeship program. If we keep on sending qualified, you know, really quality candidates to them, when they have the opportunity to try to expand, hopefully, we're going to be at the, you know, the top of their list of high schools that they want to partner with, and they'll be able to figure out how we can make it work. I think that'd be a great, you know, ultimate goal, because, number one, there's no cost to the district, while there are current instructors, and I think there's about four different schools in Connecticut where they have that instructor at the high school providing trading, where they get high school credit and some type of real-world benefit. I would love to learn more about those programs, I don't know a lot about them.
I think with like the math, it has to be instructed by a licensed journeyman as well.
Right.
Because when I was talking with Paul about, about possibly getting them to be able to count their math towards hours, it's something that has to do with the licensing of the instructor.
Thank you, thank you, Jared.
Jared, not a, not a question, but a comment. First of all, thank you guys for being here, I really appreciate it, and I, you know, I wish you the best in your futures. I was a union man my whole working life, I was a team stewardess for many, many years, not a trade union, but a, a union. And I just want to let you guys know, so you're going to appreciate the hourly rates at the beginning, but it's the benefits that the union's going to provide for you that you're going to, you know, realize as you get older and if you have a family. The security that a union provides for you is, makes all the difference in the world, so best of luck, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a great job here, too, thank you, really. Good luck to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I know Jared touched on it, but when, when he pitched the idea and Jeff and Jared identified the kids, we sat down in the conference room. And the thing that I want to make sure the board is aware and those watching at home, not only did we talk about the, the benefits to them and the program, we also talked about how important this was for these three young men to represent our school and our community the right way, and they certainly did that. You know, we talked about getting there early, you know, every day you come here is a big yellow bus, brings kids on time, right? There, they had to be responsible enough to get up early, to drive to Middletown, to, you know, be punctual, to have their phones away, and do the things that we talk about every day here at school that's transferable to the real world. And I appreciate the fact that they did it, they did it the right way, and they represented us and our community and our Board of Education the right way that continues to give our kids an opportunity beyond this year to do this again. So I just wanted to thank them publicly, because not only is it great for them, but it's great for us, and I appreciate that, so great job, guys.
Thank you. Very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you to your instructors as well. Yeah. Nice. Okay. Yes, it's Jack today? Or yesterday? Uh, Jack, it's Thursday? Happy birthday! Oh, happy birthday, Jared. Okay. Very sweet. Oh, okay. All right, so then, thank you, everyone, that brings us to our COFO report.
That's all I have, if there's any questions on POs or invoices. What do you got, Jack?
Yep. Well, I noticed on page six that we ordered maps, I just wanted to make a comment, I hope they have the Gulf of Mexico on them. But second page is thirteen and fourteen, there was a number of items regarding the cooling tower, can you just kind of give me a broad overview of what that's about?
What is that page? I'm sorry, fourteen?
Yeah, so that's probably to F and F, F and F Mechanical for the chilling towers here. F and F Mechanical for the chilling towers of the high school. So we currently have one functioning cooling tower, it's been, we're supposed to have two functioning cooling towers, but for the last ten-plus years, there's been one, so to get, make sure that's fully functioning is paramount to keeping the building cool. We had to do numerous tests over the last couple of years, but specifically here, to make sure that the freon that was putting in was not leaking out through gaskets, so it is functioning now, but when something goes, it is the age of the building, so it's, parts and labor to get that up and going is a little pricey. It is, it was included in our capital request over to the town this year, and I believe it will be approved as part of their package, so in the next year, we will be hopefully going out to bid for a new unit.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No.
That's all I got, Michelle.
We can move on to acceptance of the meeting minutes from the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting. Did everyone get the revised minutes that Sarah sent over? Does anyone have any further revisions, comments, questions? No? Then we could go ahead and accept those meeting minutes, barring any. That brings us to our audience of citizens portions of this evening. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? Okay. All right. Brings us to new business. Six point one, discussion and possible action on the approval of the Chief of Operations and Fiscal Oversight contract. That is our first item for this evening. If there are no clarifiers, do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the Chief of Operations and Fiscal Oversight contract.
Second.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask if there's any specific questions, comments?
I have a comment. Thank you for showing up for these kids all the time, not just for the Board of Ed, but in every environment, every activity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Arday, you're top.
Yes, you are. Number one, right there, says it.
Okay. If there's no further questions or comments, I will ask for a roll call vote on the approval of the COFO contract. Ms. DePama?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
No.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson is not here. Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Did everybody? Six point two. So congratulations, your contract has been approved. Okay. Six point two, discussion and possible action on the approval of the Human Resource Manager contract as discussed earlier. If there's any clarifiers, if not, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract of the Human Resource Manager.
Second. Okay. At this time, would I form a motion? Do we have any questions or comments specifically?
My only question, um, the cost share, oh, twenty. So it's just flatlined at the twenty percent? Straight through to twenty-seven, twenty-eight? Okay. Means it's a reduction of the twenty point five.
Yeah, you're gonna, it's not gonna be the last time you see that.
Okay. Okay. I'm just saying, it's not, okay.
Roll call. Ms. DePama?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
No.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Six in favor. Congratulations, contract has been approved. All right, six point three, discussion and possible action on the approval of rescinding policy five-one-three-one point nine-one-one, bullying prevention intervention, as we discussed earlier. And does anyone have any clarifiers? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve rescinding policy five-one-three-one point nine-one-one, bullying prevention and intervention.
Second. Okay. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please. Ms. DePama?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Policy approved. Six point six, discussion and possible action on waiving the second reading of our new mandated policy from the state, which is now policy five-one-three-one point nine-one-one, Connecticut school climate policy. As you know, there's, we cannot modify, we cannot add, we cannot really do much with this except adopt it. So if there's no questions or comments, I will ask for a roll call vote. Do you need a motion?
We need, I'll make a motion first, okay?
And this is just to waive the second reading?
Yes, I'm making a motion to waive the second reading of policy five-one-three-one point nine-one-one, Connecticut school climate policy.
Roll call. Ms. DePama?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Now, we have six point five, discussion and possible action on the approval of policy five-one-three-one point nine-one-one, Connecticut school climate policy. Is that a motion?
Well, clarifiers, right?
And Claire, this is, well, first, we had a vote to waive the second reading, now we are waiving adopting.
So here's a clarify.
So this is mandated?
Mandated.
That's all I needed to know, thank you.
So I make a motion to approve policy number five-one-three-one point nine-one-one, Connecticut school climate policy.
Second.
Okay. And again, no questions, comments, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. DePama?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
No.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our business for this evening. Our future, our next meeting is June twenty-fourth.
Can I, can I ask, can we get a report of, follow-up on what's going on? That sign that I've been asking about that's at McDermott's, which is now Crabtree with the band that welcomes people to East Haven and looks horrible?
Well, I will tell you that Crabtree does not date any statement either.
Well, it doesn't matter, what's the sign, the sign is there. I know, I, excuse me, excuse me, I know that Mr. Wolf has been working on, I'd just like to get an update as to where we are on that, please.
Thank you, Arday.
You're welcome.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Mm-hmm.
So this is mandated?
Mandated.
That's all I needed to know, thank you.
So I make a motion to approve policy number five-one-three-one point nine-one-one, Connecticut school climate policy.
Second.
Okay. And again, no questions, comments, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. DePama?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Policy approved. Six point six, discussion and possible action on waiving the second reading of policy three-five-one-seven point four, wildlife management and feeding guidelines. Not sure if there's really any clarifying needs, this is just a motion to waive the second reading.
I'll make a motion to waive the second reading. Second.
Not really much to really question on the waiving. So roll call vote, unless anyone is objecting to that, if they have any questions or, nope, roll call vote. Ms. DePama?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
So now we are at six point seven, discussion and possible action on the approval of policy three-five-one-seven point four, wildlife management and feeding guidelines. Is there a clarified, this is a optional adoption of policy, this is not to be confused with the school climate, and it is not mandated, but it's something, we might want to have some protocols in place surrounding this, especially where some of our schools are Does anybody have any further clarifiers before we open this up? If not, then I'll ask for a motion.
The only change that I would propose would be...
We, I think we have to go into a motion, right? Oh, no, because we want to, that's right, clarify, yeah.
So under wildlife rehabilitation activities related to rehabilitation of wildlife, are exempt, provided they are conducted by licensed professionals, if they do not involve feeding wildlife on school grounds in some various specific situations, who would maybe require for trapping purposes if there are injured animals that have been removed from the program?
Yeah, I thought we read that carefully to...
My suggestion is to strike out that part, and be conducted by licensed professionals.
Because we tried to leave provisions for various reasons.
It just says they do not involve feeding wildlife on school grounds, while they wouldn't be being fed to the day, they would potentially be fed and trapped.
Which section is that?
It's right on the first page.
Number two?
It's the number two?
Mm-hmm.
And the second, I mean, yeah, read number two.
It's a very intriguing, but I would prefer.
Specifically, what are the consequences if someone was caught feeding one of these animals after being reported? Can we just discuss what that is for like a staff member?
Uh-oh.
Just so it's kind of...
Should I go and take that? It'd be a new, it'd be a new...
Well, we, I think it's important to know what that is, to be, I mean, if we have a, if we had their...
Well, if they violated a board policy...
Right, so what would their disciplinary action be?
Well, basically, they would follow more standard disciplinary actions, a warning, great warning, and then if they continue.
A Uden meeting, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, you know, violating board policy is, you know, violating board policy.
Right, no, I'm just saying, I, I think it's important to make sure that's stated.
Maybe for that wildlife rehabilitation not involve continued feeding? Or unsupervised feeding? I don't know, I'm trying to think of a...
Everything that's done by someone is licensed, it's done inside of the law, so...
Because I don't know, are they really feeding them, or are they coercing them?
Gray area.
It's a gray area, it is.
I want to get rid of that gray area, is my concern.
All right.
For instance, if they are there and they cannot be removed due to conflicts with the students being in the building at certain times...
Why don't we just end it after professionals then?
That's what my concern was.
Could we strike that? And have that reflected? So put a period right after professionals and strike the rest. There we go, fixed.
Do we, you...
We would just approve it as modified.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the wildlife management and feeding guidelines without strutting, ending wildlife rehabilitation after licensed professionals.
Okay, second. All right. Questions or comments on the policy itself? Roll call vote. Ms. DePama?
Yes.
Ms. Delongo?
Yes.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Putney?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
No.
Mr. Stacy?
Yes.
Dr. Delusha?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our business for this evening. Our future, our next meeting is June twenty-fourth.
Can I, can I ask, can we get a report of, follow-up on what's going on? That sign that I've been asking about that's at McDermott's, which is now Crabtree?
Fabulous.
With the band that welcomes people at East Haven and looks horrible?
Well, I will tell you that Crabtree does not date any statement either.
Well, it doesn't matter, but the sign, the sign is there. I know, I, excuse me, excuse me, I know that Mr. Wolf has been working on, I'd just like to get an update as to where we are on that, please.
Thank you, Arday.
You're welcome.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.